Agriculture. These students will be learning about math and science and even writing through the lens of gardening.
Measurement comes in also when we're talking about colors and shapes and history and just finding ways to integrate the garden into the instruction that they're already charged with teaching.
They need to learn the lessons of fruits and vegetables and the things that they consume on a daily basis just don't happen. It takes a lot of hard work, it takes perseverance, a lot of love.
Prodigic Learning Garden also teaches children about good nutrition.
So this is going to be so great when they do come up to pull them out and really make a salad and have them taste different vegetables. I think it's going to be awesome.
A lot of kids are ready.
Yeah, because vegetables are good and they're also nice for you. They're healthy.
Over the next several years, this Learning Garden will be used by the school's nearly 1,000 students. The ultimate goal is to help them become part of the next generation of informed and empowered citizens who can better manage the earth's resources. The Captain Plant Foundation has served more than a million children through its programs. For more information, go to captainplanetfoundation.org. Folks came out to support our local firefighters and their families during a golf tournament. Proceeds benefit the L.A. City Fire Foundation, which helps support firefighter families in their time of need.
A lot of people reach out and they want to know what they can do for firefighters or donate. And they do. And where does that money go? We don't really know. And now we can make sure that that money goes to firefighters and the families that are in need.
Proud to be here to support the firefighter foundation. Through the foundation, we can support their efforts to help their members, help their families, and reinvest in the community.
So to be able to give back to a foundation that's going to support their own is really, from our end, very easy to do because what they do is the hard part.
Lace up your skates for a night on the ice, or a day for that matter. As Gil Reyes reports, the Pershing Square Holiday Ice Rink has opened to kick off the holiday season.
Beneath blue skies and towering skyscrapers, L.A. City's largest outdoor ice rink returns, signaling the start of the holidays in downtown L.A.
I love this. This is the best thing to hit Los Angeles.
We're the first kids on the ice. It's a really good opportunity. You can have fun with your friends.
And it's strange that it's in Los Angeles because it's sunny.
By Holiday Ice Rink returns to downtown's Pershing Square for its 22nd season. Besides daily skating, get ready for DJ nights, festivals, and concerts to help fill you with cheer well past the new year.
I know people that have been coming here for years with their family, and I don't know there's something romantic about this ice rink because I know there's been over 100 proposals on this ice. Rumor has it we're going to do our first wedding this year.
Three, two, one!
But first, an icebreaker hosted by the L.A. Department of Wreckin Parks, filled with all kinds of wintery wonder. This opening ceremony included Olympic figure skating champions. Wow, look at that. Also Snoopy strutting his stuff courtesy of Knott's Berry Farm. The cast of Disney's Frozen: The Broadway Musical also wowed the crowd gathered at Pershing Square, one of L.A.'s oldest public parks.
At L.A. City Parks, we're so proud of these spaces and we want the public to come out and enjoy them because they are their parks. They're their backyards, their gathering places, the places to come and relax.
Starting in February, Pershing Square will undergo a multi-year renovation to add new landscaping and a dog park. Construction means this will likely be the rink's final season for a while.
We're still going to have our wonderful summer concerts this summer because the first phase will not interfere with that. We're going to try our best to keep some sort of programming going, but at this point, the ice rink for next year is probably off the table.
Enjoy it while you can.
At 7,200 square feet, it's the largest outdoor ice rink in the city of L.A. More than 54,000 skaters visit every year. In its six years of existence, it's become a holiday tradition for many Angelinos. And this year, the L.A. Zoo Light Show at the L.A. Zoo has some wild and beastly new light exhibits you won't want to miss. Anna Marcos takes us there.
Boy, are you in for a big surprise when you come to visit the L.A. Zoo Lights because this year there are all kinds of brand-new animal light sculptures like you've never seen before. They are all over the zoo. And for the next seven weeks, you can be one of the quarter-million people to come in and take in the sights and the lights.
The L.A. Zoo has turned on its yearly holiday lights with a bang. More than 500,000 LED lights to be exact, and there's reason for all the fanfare. For example, this new animal light show near the entrance.
The world's largest illuminated pop-up storybook. And we actually were going to register with the Guinness Book of World Records. They made it in Italy and they shipped it over in pieces, assembled it for us, and now it's ours.
And with all the glowing frogs, alligators, and other wild things, it's drawing a lot of oohs and ahs from the visitors.
Oh, you mean the animals that light up?
Yeah, we saw the...
I like the tiger.
I like the cheetah. If there was a cheetah, I think there was because my dress is cheetah print.
Oh, so it'll match your dress?
I really like flamingos, so I was looking at the flamingo cages and on the grass, it had like statues and skeletons of flamingos with lights around it.
I like the tiger one because I kind of like tigers.
The gay man's choir of L.A.'s a cappella group, After Shock, helped celebrate the zoo's bigger, newer, and improved light show. Also on hand, American Idol finalist Kimberly Caldwell, L.A. FC soccer player Jordan Harvey, and Fox 11's Julie Chang. And guess who else will be hanging around the zoo all season? Santa. He's got his own Santa cabin for greeting kids, both naughty and nice.
We have this beautiful outdoor environment that allows for this connection with your family and your friends while you are looking at these amazing light shows and being transformed.
You'll still find the big-time favorites like the Twinkle Tunnel. Only this year, it's gotten, well, twinklier.
Why I like the tunnel because there's a lot of lights and it's pretty.
I like the one that's over there. That's a disco ball. That's over there when you're coming through that part.
The L.A. Zoo Lights will continue to glow, shine, and twinkle from now until January 5th.
It's Christmas in Los Angeles. You know, we don't get all the snow, so we get these lights.
To find out more, go to lazulights.org. Underserved kids interested in a music career were treated to a free music industry career fair where they got to meet some industry heavyweights and learn what it takes to break in.
I can truly be myself with music. I can't wait to see what comes out of this.
We are here at the Wiltern Theater for the All-Access Fest. This is Music Forwards Industry Career Fair, ensuring that all young people have access into the industry, spark discovery around jobs, and be able to start charting their own stories and pathways into the future.
It's good to have connections and know people. And they said there would be like job fairs, so I would be able to see colleges and opportunities.
Taking control of your lives, discovering things today, sparking things for yourselves, and starting to chart your own stories here in the music industry.
Grab the family and get ready for the next Siclavia. Enjoy the magic and wonder of the L.A. Zoo Lights and take in a family-friendly concert at Union Station. All this and things to do. The L.A. Zoo wants to get you and the family in the holiday spirit. Join other Angelinos as you walk through the entire zoo after sunset and take in the holiday decorations. There's food, drinks, and plenty of great photo opportunities. Bring the family and enjoy Zoo Lights. You'll also get to see the world's largest illuminated pop-up storybook. Zoo Lights runs nightly at the L.A. Zoo, now through January 5th. For more info, visit lazoo.org. Looking for a family-friendly concert? Well, look no further because Union Station has the perfect concert for the whole family. Come and enjoy the Winter Wonderland theme with some Santa selfies, holiday-themed arts and crafts, and interactive games. The fun starts at 6:30 p.m. on Friday, December 6th. There will also be a musical guest and free cocoa. For more info, visit unionstationla.com. Councilmember Bob Blumenfield invites you to join him for Siclavia: The Valley, a family-friendly event to open up Sherman Way from Canoga Park through Winnetka and into Reseda for a five-mile stretch of open streets. Bring your friends to bike, skateboard, run, or walk Sherman Way with Councilmember Blumenfield, taking place on December 8th from 9 a.m. to 3 p.m. To learn more, visit siclavia.org. And that's a look at some things to do. That's it for this edition. I'm Yana Kay. From all of us here at L.A. This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. We're also on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. See you next time for more of L.A. This Week.
Good morning, good morning, good morning. If everyone would please take a seat. Shhh. Everyone, please take a seat. Today is Friday, December 6th. Want to welcome you to our meeting in the valley. We are pleased to be here. Mr. Clerk, we do have a quorum. Would you call a roll?
Blumenfield, Bonn, and Buscay, and Ossidio, Harris, Dawson, Weezer, Corret, Krikorian, Lee, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Wesson, ten members present in a quorum. Mr. President.
Thank you very much. First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Ms. Martinez moves. Ms. Rodriguez seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Blumenfield moves, and Mr. Corret seconds. Continue.
Mr. President, please note that a community impact statement for Item 3 from the Mar Vista Community Neighborhood Council has been received. Furthermore, Items 1 through 4 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Okay, do you have cards?
Cards on all four items, sir.
Okay, then let's move on to... We'll hold those items and we'll move on to the next.
Mr. President, Items 5 and 6 are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Do you have cards on these items as well?
Yes, sir, we do.
Okay, that brings us where?
Mr. President, that takes council to presentations or items called special.
Okay. Okay, we're going to move into some presentations, but before we do that, we'll begin with taking some public comment. We'll do some general public comment. Let's go with Sean Murphy, Monica Alexko... And Candido. Yes, Mr. Murphy, good to see you.
Yeah, good to see you. Good to see you. I'm happy for the nomination of Norrie Martinez becoming Madam President January 14th. Maybe she can change, get the council the way it used to be when Eric Garcia ran the city council. You didn't have this nonsense of disruption of the means, and I'm getting sick and tired of them. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please identify yourself.
Monica Alexenko. I want to congratulate Mrs. Martinez. Would like to speak regarding the DWP this morning. We've seen the fires this year. We also see the many frayed lines that are on our streets and have not been replaced, let alone refurbished, in decades. But we've also seen our rates going up on our bills. And I believe that it is really necessary to hold the DWP accountable for their behavior. As far as accountability is concerned, I'd like to also address our city attorney's office as far as accountability because it does seem that things do get out of hand and that the taxpayers wind up paying hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars, for bad behavior and actually criminal behavior. So thank you very much.
Thank you. So Candido, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Welcome to the San Fernando Valley. Happy Merry Christmas, happy holidays. Mr. President, thank you for the time that you've served the city, and I greatly appreciate all you've done. You know, I want to talk about the homeless situation in the city. You know, we all have to take responsibility for that. We all in some way have contributed to that. But the thing that is so upsetting, especially for me in the San Fernando Valley, is what's happened with the pop-up restaurants. They're destroying other restaurants. People who have worked hard, who did it the right way, who were mostly immigrants, who came here, built their businesses, did everything right, and then what do you have now? You have pop-up restaurants. And some of you are very proud of that. I'm not because I see what it does to people who really worked hard to do it the right way. So I hope that you can find a solution to that. Many of you think it's a good way to run the city, but you know, it's an underground economy. Where's that money going to? Is it paying taxes? And Ms... One last thing, Mr.
Thank you, Candido. Thank you. Thank you very much. Pierre Bohamed. Pierre, please come forward. Yes, sir. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Pierre Bohamed. Congratulations, Councilwoman Martinez. Really happy for you. I'm happy to see that perhaps now many quality-of-life issues will be addressed and hopefully moved in a positive direction. NoHo West at Oxnard in Laurel Canyon is being welcomed by enormous amount of graffiti on a brand-new freeway wall east and westbound on the 170 from Burbank Boulevard to Oxnard. Call Las Vegas and Phoenix to find out what they're doing because it's working. The walls are clean. Phoenix uses low-crime prisoners in orange suits during the day to clean and beautify the city. No excuses, new laws to help reduce graffiti. You should not be allowed to do photo ops anymore until you solve graffiti, homeless, encampments, sidewalk repairs, and any quality-of-life issues for your constituents. Congrats, Councilwoman Martinez, on combating human trafficking and prostitution. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Blumenfield, would you like to begin with your presentations? Okay, and we will return to public comment.
All right, let's get started. Council President, colleagues, today is a historic day in Los Angeles for refugees who have made this city their home and for the many refugees in camps that are hoping to come here. Now refugees, as we all know, are defined as people who have a well-founded fear that they'll be persecuted in their home country because of their race, religion, nationality, political... political opinion, or membership in a particular social group, and they seek admittance to a safer country where they can rebuild their lives. Like my grandmother, who came here fleeing Cossack soldiers. Her brother was killed. They came as refugees because of a Tsarist regime in Russia. So many people leave everything they have behind to come and make a new life in this country. And later today, this LA City Council will vote on a resolution to declare Los Angeles a welcoming city. Now, this isn't just a symbolic thing. It is the direct response to President Trump's latest executive order that, for the first time, gives, in our history, gives states and municipalities the right to deny refugee settlement. Actually emboldens those folks, those potentially xenophobic municipalities, to not allow folks to be refugees. And let's be clear, the President passed this executive order to hamper refugee settlement in the United States, and to embolden and enable many of these anti-refugee municipalities to close their doors. And while several refugee organizations, some are represented right here, are battling this executive order in the courts, we in Los Angeles will do our part to issue a clarion call that exclaims, "We welcome refugees." We welcome refugees with pride in this city of Los Angeles. Los Angeles is the home of the world's largest per capita diasporous, and we thrive economically, and culturally, and socially because of our diversity. We embrace our diversity. Our refugee settlement program is an integral part of who we are as a city and who we are as a nation. Trump's executive order will take place on December 25th, but we will not let that Grinch steal Christmas for future Angelinos who are fleeing persecution. It's not the Los Angeles way, it's not the California way, and it is not the American Right now, the mayor and his office, Councilmember O'Farrell and his staff, me and my team, we are coordinating with Governor Newsom to get the entire state of California to continue accepting refugees. But, colleagues, it all starts here, right here in these chambers. Trump has also been reducing the number of admitted refugees every year since he took office. From 110,000 people just two years ago, it is down to 18,000 people this year that he is capping the number at. This is the lowest number in our history, and of, it's the lowest number of refugee folks. And this is a time when we have a growing refugee crisis across the globe. Frankly, it is shameful, and it is not the America that I know and love. Between 2012 and 2016, the world's refugee population doubled to 25.9 million people. It is literally, we are currently in literally the worst refugee crisis in recorded history. Yes, worse than after World War II, worse than after the Syrian war, worse than after all of the different conflicts around the world that have generated so many refugees. All the things going on in the world are making it worse now, and what are we doing as a nation? We're at the lowest number in history. When refugees come to Los Angeles, they're not coming because they want benefits, or they're trying to take jobs. They're coming because these, the towns that they grew up in, and their entire lives have been shattered by violence, persecution, and war. They deserve our respect. They deserve dignity after the hardships that they have endured, and America has always been that beacon of hope. Now, I've worked to support refugees for many years. Back when I worked for Congressman Berman, in the early 90s, we were active on getting the temporary protective status and a number of other programs to try to help bring folks to this country. We are a place of refuge. We are a land of immigrants, and we cannot allow one-wayward administration to destroy our national identity when it comes to this issue. Today, I have with me a number of folks, with me my colleague, Councilmember O'Farrell, and four amazing leaders who are going to speak, who come from the refugee advocacy world, and they're gonna say a few words. And they are Joe Goldman, who is the Community Engagement Director of HIAS, which is the world's oldest refugee resettlement organization; Jocelyn Duarte, the Executive Director of SALIF, the Salvadoran American Leadership Education Fund; Kadim Dai, who has lived as a refugee for most of his life and is an accomplished documentary filmmaker; and he's the founder of Espalo, which is an education nonprofit for children living in refugee camps; and last, Attorney Sam Yebri, who is the co-founder of 30 Years After, which is a nonprofit dedicated to promoting civic participation and leadership for American Iranian Jews, particularly who came here after the Iranian Revolution. Mr. O'Farrell, my colleague, will say a few words now. Mr. O'Farrell.
Thanks, Bob. Thank you so much. We have a president who is about to be impeached for committing bribery and extortion on a foreign government that just a generation ago was accepting thousands of refugees from the very country he bribed and tried to extort, and that will be his legacy, not a proud legacy at all. Hopefully, we can, at some point very soon, bring an end to the criminal enterprise that is occupying the White House. Not only is that his way of doing business as the Commander in Chief, but as Mr. Bloomingfield just described, he also, in his sociopathic ways, has zero feelings for human beings and suffering, and folks who look to the United States as a beacon of light and hope, and have always done so. You know, many, many years ago, all Americans, unless they were Native American, were refugees or immigrants to this country. It's ironic and very sad that the descendants of many of those refugees that were welcomed by Native American tribes are now supporting this criminal in the White House, trying to prevent other refugees from enjoying the same benefit that their ancestors benefited from. That's what we're talking about today. Los Angeles is traditionally a safe harbor for refugees who escape persecution in their respective countries. I look forward to an "I-vote" on item number five today, so that we can make sure that the whole world knows that Los Angeles is going to continue being welcoming of refugees who escape persecution. I want to thank all of you, and by extension, the state of California, for leading the rest of the nation in being an inclusive and accepting city and state. I've been partnering very deeply with SALIF since I've been in office, helping asylum seekers just south of the border, and once asylum seekers have made it across the border, we will continue doing that, supplying resources, being there in person in Tijuana, and supporting the crises at the border and all the refugees that need our love, support, respect, and assistance. Another consequence of this discrimination against refugees is that it inordinately affects those who identify as LGBT community, and also plenty of gender discrimination within that population as well. So, the LGBT community is overrepresented in being discriminated against from this administration in relation to the refugee, universe of refugees. Just another important distinction. So, it's important that we did include the LGBT language in this resolution. Refugees come in all shapes, colors, languages, sexual orientation, gender identity. We have to ensure that all that language is inclusive of this community and all communities. And I would, I would send a memo to the President that it's refugees who are so deeply thankful of the opportunities this country offers them, that they actually help this country and help make us what we are. And the refugees that I've worked with, who eventually assimilate into US society, are outstanding members of the society and exceptional Americans, once they're fully assimilated into this country and eventually become citizens. So, there's a lot of work to do, but the important thing is, today, we're going to declare to the world that Los Angeles represents the true American spirit, and not necessarily our current federal government, and especially the executive branch. So, thank you, Mr. Bloomingfield, for your leadership on this, and I want to thank all of those, the nonprofits and the individuals, who volunteer their time and resources to help refugees into the city of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms.
Mr. Bloomingfield, there will, there are a couple of members on the queue, so please let me know when we, you'd like, allow them.
Great. We have four.
That's fine.
Four speakers, and then we could go to that, would be great. Thank you. So, the next speaker I want, brought here with you to speak to you today, is from the Community Engagement, Community Engagement Director of HIAS, Joe Goldman. I've known Joe's father for many years and worked with him for many years. HIAS started as the Hebrew Immigrant Aid Society, and it was designed originally to help resettle Jewish refugees escaping from antisemitism from Eastern Europe, folks like my grandmother, who I talked about earlier. HIAS continues to be inspired by Jewish values, but it is focused on helping everyone, and it helps refugees from all, all countries, all walks of life. Joe.
Thank you, and thank you for introducing HIAS so beautifully and for this resolution. And I just want to say, again, on behalf of HIAS, established in 1881 as the Hebrew Immigrant Aid Society, and responsible for resettlement of over 4.5 million people of all backgrounds fleeing persecution, thank you for standing up for refugees today. The vibrant LA Jewish community, as it exists today, is due to the laws and systems that you are voting to support, as tens of thousands of Holocaust survivors, Jews fleeing the Middle East, North Africa, Iran, and the Soviet Union, and their descendants have made our city a better place for all of us. From the nearly 2,000 local HIAS supporters you heard from over the past few weeks in support of this resolution, to my colleagues from our 16 offices around the globe on the front lines of serving refugees and asylum seekers, declaring LA a welcoming city upholds a vision of an America that leads with compassion, and knows that welcoming refugees is good for our economic well-being and national security. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Next, we're gonna hear from the Executive Director of SALIF, Jocelyn Duarte. Jocelyn is a part-time faculty member at CSUN's Central American Studies Department, and has contributed to the academic community on transnational mothers and efforts to support educational and legal services to immigrant communities. She has worked extensively as the Executive Director of SALIF to support this mission. As many of you know, SALIF was founded to promote the civic participation and representation of Salvadoran and other Latinx communities in the US, and is rooted in social justice and education. I've had the privilege of working with SALIF from years back, as I mentioned, I worked for Congressman, then Chair of Foreign Affairs Committee on TPS and other issues. I even got to go with SALIF de El Salvador in the early 2000s, right after the big earthquake. So, without any further ado, Jocelyn.
Welcome.
Thank you. Very nice to see everybody. It is a pleasure to be here with you all today. Good morning, good morning to all the council members here today, and our community members, especially to Councilmember Mitchell Farrell and Councilmember Bob Bloomingfield. I am Jocelyn Duarte, the Executive Director of the Salvadoran American Leadership and Educational Fund, and as mentioned, SALIF was founded 24 years ago by Carlos Vaqueroano, a Salvadoran refugee that had lost three of his brothers during the Civil War, which was funded by the US. As a daughter myself of refugees, of Central American parents, I know firsthand the impact of trauma of forced migration, just like many of the refugees that are coming to Los Angeles today. At SALIF, we are able to work with refugees and immigrant families, and we hear their stories. We're able to provide them with resources, and we're able to connect them with all the other resources that the county might provide, as well as the city. This past year, our work has expanded to provide border humanitarian aid for a diversity of asylum seekers awaiting to legally seek asylum at the US border. We thank the leadership of the City Council, especially of Councilman O'Farrell and Bloomingfield, for their commitment to supporting asylum seekers in the city of Los Angeles. As the current administration continues to further criminalize refugees, Los Angeles needs to continue to lead the fight. To support immigrant and asylum seekers, there is a global refugee crisis, and the United States has historically opened their doors and taken in millions of refugees over the years. The White House's executive order on refugees is inhumane, cruel, and un-American. This resolution by the City Council is a direct response in combating these attacks on refugees. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Jocelyn.
Thank you, Ms. Duarte. Next, we're gonna hear from Kadim Dai. He is a talented filmmaker and nonprofit leader who has lived most of his life as a refugee. He was born in Afghanistan. He became a refugee at just two years old, when his family was forced to flee their home because of Taliban persecution. Kadim spent his formative years in a refugee camp where he sought out education and discovered his passion for filmmaking and storytelling. After years of waiting, Kadim was finally admitted to Los Angeles as a refugee, where he initially struggled to make the city feel like his home. I got to meet him a number of years ago, because when he came to the city, some friends of mine took him in, into their home, to help him with the transition. In fact, and Laurel and Chad, too, are here, and they're here with Kadim, they took him in initially. And, in fact, through his hard work and luck, he has become an accomplished documentary filmmaker here in this country, and he focuses on the refugee experience. And he has installations in museums across the world, and he's now the founder of an educational nonprofit known as Espalo. And that group teaches kids living in refugee camps, like himself at one point. Kadim, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Welcome.
Mr. Speaker.
Welcome.
I was born in Afghanistan as a child to an ethnic minority called Hazara. As an ethnic minority, my people are persecuted in Afghanistan. That's why my family escaped to Pakistan, and I grew up as a refugee in Pakistan. My whole, the, when I was growing up, the whole time, what I wanted was just to be, just to be somewhere where I could live, where I could go to school without fear of being bombed, without fear of being persecuted. And growing up in Pakistan, I saw my friends who got killed by Taliban. In 2013, my school was blown up, and I lost my friends and my classmates. That's when I escaped from Pakistan again, became a refugee in Indonesia, and I escaped via Thailand and Malaysia, and I went to Indonesia. In 2016, I was one of the luckiest refugee who got accepted in the US, and I came through humanitarian visa, which has now got really into like 18,000 people now, and I was the luckiest one who came with more than, among us, more than 60,000 people. I came here in Los Angeles, and I was also the luckiest one to have meet Americans who welcomed me in the city, and who gave me a new chance to live here. And that was Laurel and Chad. They gave me the experience that I wanted from my childhood, just to be, just to go to school, just to hang out with my friends without feeling that who is going to get shot. And that was my whole experience back in those countries when I was a refugee. And since now I'm living in the US, I'm experiencing finally a life, finally that I can go out, I can think about what is going to happen next, what I'm going to do next, what films I'm going to make, and that is, America gave me the next chance, the second chance. And I argue today that there are millions of other people who are just looking for the next chance, and they can be our next leaders. There are many children in the refugee camp who born, who was born in a war-torn country. They had nothing to do, and they have nothing to do with, with, with the place where they was, they were born. So, I, so there are thousands and millions of children live there and waiting for the next chance. So, I argue to push and pass this bill to allow more refugees to come and experience what I experienced today. Thank you.
Hey, Bob, let us bring up, let people see, where's Laurel and Chad? Let's bring them up here and let's give them a round, where are they? Let's bring them up here and let's give them a round, where are they? Come on, come on down. Please, let us put you on the screen. Give them a real round of applause. Guys, thank you so much for changing our life, and I want LA to see you. God bless you. Thank you all. Thank you.
All right, before we get to our, our next speaker, we have a quick clip from a film that, that Kadim made. It's about a minute. If we're going to roll the clip, please.
That the learning center would not only be good for the children, but would also help create a sense of community among the refugees. We were doing something positive for ourselves.
My family come here, and I'm with them.
So you are with your family?
Yes.
How many are you in your family?
Five persons.
Ah.
Teacher, maybe a doctor.
A doctor?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thanks. I said I wanted to be a doctor. It was like my dream job since like, when I was a little kid, when I was in Indonesia, I was like, I want to be a doctor. And the reason why I wanted to be a doctor is because there's many sick people that they die each year, or maybe each day, they die because of like disease and stuff. And I wanted to be a doctor, to help them and cure the disease, and so there's, there's not going to be too much people dying each day or each minute, so I could be a part of this and help people be alive, I could say that, enjoy your life and not die from disease, so I could help them. That's, that's why I chose to be a doctor, and I still think that's what I'm going to be.
Okay, our, our last speaker before we get to my colleagues here, I want to bring up my friend Sam Yebri. He is the co-founder of 30 Years After. Sam's family are Iranian Jews who fled from Iran to escape persecution after the Iranian Revolution. And as an Angelino, and many of you know Sam, he's, he's no stranger to these chambers, he's given back to the community by founding an amazing nonprofit group called 30 Years After. And they serve the Iranian Jewish community, of which many, as I mentioned, are refugees themselves. In addition, Sam is a partner at Murano Yebri LLP, and in his spare time, he serves on the Board of Betsedek. Sam.
Thank you, Councilmember Bloomingfield and Councilmember O'Farrell, for this important opportunity. Good morning, council members and Council President, President. My name is Sam Yebri. I am a proud refugee. When I was a year old, some time ago, my parents had to make the fateful decision to leave the land of their birth, everyone they knew, everything they had, almost overnight, due to war, revolution, and religious persecution. With the help of Hyas, and with the help and the benevolence of our country's asylum laws, my family and countless others were able to make it to the United States and build a new life. My story is about refugees from Iran, but the story could be about refugees from any country in this world, from Central America, from Africa, from anywhere in Asia and elsewhere in the world. And when we came to this country, my family, Iranian American Jews, and refugees from all over the world have helped make Los Angeles a more vibrant, inclusive, and successful city, becoming leaders in industry and business, law and medicine, philanthropy, arts, academia, and I can go on. I urge this council, support this resolution, to stand up for those forces that are turning their back on, on our city's rich heritage of welcoming and including refugees in our story. Thank you.
So I have some certificates, but I know we have colleagues on the queue, so, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Bloomingfield. Mr. Coretts.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Bloomingfield, and, and our colleague from the 13th District, Mitch, as well, for bringing this forward. My father was a refugee from Nazi Germany. At the time he was able to get out, he couldn't get a passport to the United States, so he was able to escape, eventually wind up in Argentina. And he came to this country, I have paperwork from various things, I have no indication that he came legally, and since he would never talk to me about that time, I, I have no idea. I assume he came illegally. But it was a difficult time, looking back, and I know that even in this country, we turned away ships full of Jewish refugees from Nazi Germany, only to return to their home country to be killed. And we were one of the better countries in terms of, of being helpful. And I always wondered, how could countries not be willing to take people who they knew were facing almost certain death if they were returned to their countries, and not provide them with refuge? And I thought, well, at least, we're, we're in a more enlightened age, we'll never see that during my lifetime. And yet, what we're seeing now is perhaps even worse, because there's so many more refugees from so many more places that are facing difficulty, that are facing high possibility of, of death and persecution, and yet, we're doing less and less and less. And so, I'm proud that we are making this statement as a city. I'm proud that we are going to work to extend that to the entire state of California, and say, we are not going to turn away people in need, we are going to welcome them, we are going to support them, we are going to help them, and I'm, I'm proud to be one of the people making that statement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Price.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too want to thank my colleagues Bloomingfield and Farrell for bringing this outstanding group of citizens before us today. We know how important immigrants, the important role immigrants play in, in our city, in our society. That certainly is true in, in my district, the 9th District. We have a, a good cross-section of immigrants who are making a real difference, making a contribution to improving our community. In fact, over the past year or so, we've been able to allocate almost over a million dollars in discretionary funds for organizations providing assistance to those in our, in our district regarding citizenship and other legal matters. And so, we just want to say, thank you, thank you for the work you're doing. We need to do more, but we can't step down, buckle into the wishes of a president who is so insensitive and completely off-base in terms of the unique role and resources that our community represents. And so, continued success, keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Price.
Mr. Bonin.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank Mr. Bloomingfield and Mr. O'Farrell for, for this presentation and, and for this initiative. I want to thank all the organizations that, that are here today. Hello, Joe. Jill Goldman and I have known each other for 15 years now, I guess. But most particularly, I want to thank those of you who came here to this country seeking refuge. I want to thank you for actually believing that America was a nation strong enough, and welcoming enough, and loving enough to accept refugees. My belief that that is America has been sorely shaken by this administration. And our affirmation that this is the kind of country we can be, and that, and our willingness to, to reach out and make this country more welcoming is, is essential. This country is going backwards, and the affirmation that we are a welcoming city is an attempt to, you know, to, to warm the increasingly cold and dark heart of the American spirit. And I want to ask you, I know that there's a lot of talk every time somebody is new to this country to assimilate. Please do not assimilate. Do not become part of this culture. Please help transform it, and enrich it, and improve it. Our, our Constitution starts with the, the phrase, "In order to form a more perfect union." And the more diverse we are, and the more open we are, and the more welcoming we are, the more perfect we become. So, please don't assimilate, please improve us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonin.
Ms. Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Bloomingfield and Mr. O'Farrell, for this wonderful presentation. And I want to thank, you know, I appreciate the diversity that you've assembled here. I think that's something that we oftentimes gets overlooked in this conversation, because many of us, we're all refugees, whether we're seeking better opportunities for our families, or whether we're just fleeing persecution or war-torn areas. And the reality is, is that I, what I appreciate most about the presentation this morning, is that so often what happens is that people come, they find their opportunity, and they forget about those that they've left behind. And I want to thank each and every one of you for reflecting the commitment that we're not going to forget those that still need us. Our humanity depends on it, and your commitment to continuing in your advocacy work is truly important for us to remind everybody in this world that we need each and every, we need each other in order to sustain a better environment for all families to succeed, whether in their native homeland or here in this country. But here in this country and here in this city, we will continue to commit ourselves to providing that refuse for everybody to seek a better opportunity and better life for their families. So I thank you all very much for your work, for your continued advocacy. I'm proud to stand along with you in that fight, and thank you so much for your work.
Thank you.
Mr. Ru.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to quickly rise to also thank both my colleagues, Councilmember Bloomingfield and O'Farrell, for doing this very wonderful and important presentation, and of course, to all the various community groups that are here today, and also not here today, doing lots of great work. And a special shout-out to my good friend, Sam Yebri. How are you? But thank you for everything that you do, to make LA a welcoming place for all refugees. We are a place where we help our neighbors, where we help those who are the sickest and poorest among us. And as one of two immigrants on this Los Angeles City Council, it is important that we embrace all. So, thank you for all the work that you do, and the continued work that you will be doing, because this is the land of the free, this is the land of opportunity, and this is where we welcome all. So, thank you so very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ru.
Mr. Bloomingfield, a close.
Great. Well, to close, I'm going to give some certificates to, to our speakers. Jocelyn, Kadim, Joe, and Sam. And, and really, hopefully, when we take this vote, we're going to be giving something to all of the folks here, and all the refugees who are in this country and who will come to this country. So, so thank you again for being here to make this presentation, and I see other leaders, Matt from ADL, and all sorts of folks who may be speaking toward the resolution, but thank you very much.
One more round of applause. Thank you. Okay, I believe Ms. Martinez is going to be, I believe Ms. Martinez is ready with our next presentation, and as she goes to the podium, members, why don't we, Madam Clerk, let's pull up items 1, 3, and 4. It's my understanding those public comments has been satisfied on those items, so let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
Now, let's vote on item 2 as amended.
Yes, sir, and 2A has been posted and circulated.
Thank you. So let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
Ms. Martinez, the floor is yours.
Colleagues, it gives me great pleasure to, there's several of us that represent the San Fernando Valley that are here to be part of this very presentation to commemorate VICA's 70th anniversary as being part of the San Fernando Valley. Let's give them a big round of applause, they're turning 70 today, and Stuart Wellman is turning 51.
All right, let's give Stuart.
It says birthday today.
Yeah, happy birthday, Stuart.
Did I do that right? 51? You don't, you're older, yeah, a day older than 30, Stuart, but, um, happy birthday, Stuart. Again, colleagues, since I took office, it's been a pleasure to work with VICA. I've been working with VICA for as long as I've been in office, which is almost 17 years, but they are also located in my district in Lake Barboa. From their inception, the industrial association of the San Fernando Valley in 1947, they've been tireless advocates for businesses and communities that make up the San Fernando Valley. But the valley, as we know it today, didn't always look this way 70 years ago. In 1949, the Van Nuys Airport was purchased by the City of Los Angeles from the US Department of War for a dollar, and it made up, the airport was made up for civilian aviation use. That was almost, you know, 70 years ago that it was purchased, for a dollar a year, I'm sorry, for a dollar. And General Motors, the, the assembly plant that was located in Van Nuys, that had been in operation for two years, so it's been a long time, the valley has definitely changed a lot. It was associations like VICA and business groups that developed the San Fernando Valley as we know it, and it continues to advocate not only for businesses, but for all people who live in the San Fernando Valley. It was VICA who also pushed, and was very instrumental in making sure that, that Measure M was actually passed by voters to increase and improve public transportation in the San Fernando Valley. As you know, that was a tireless fight, and a lot of these business owners band together to ensure that the actual projects being proposed by Measure M were actually going to get built, and that services were actually going to come to the, to the residents of the San Fernando Valley. VICA also worked tirelessly to create the School of Engineering at my alma mater at Kelsey Northridge, so that generations of students here in the San Fernando Valley can benefit from excellent paying jobs. So, it's, um, it gives me great pleasure to have them here this morning, but also, in the past, I've teamed up with Stuart and the rest of the VICA staff to make sure that the valley fights for its fair share, and make sure that it gets the attention that it deserves. Just a couple of weeks ago, I was part of an extraordinary group of women. They led the very first extraordinary women in leadership luncheon that I was able to be part of. And like I spoke on the panel, I look forward to VICA continuing to have more of these women leadership type of panels and conversations, so that we can continue uplifting women in our city, and both in the public and private sector. So from time to time, I'm not going to shy away from this, we don't always agree with VICA on some of these policy and directions that the city council is taking, but it certainly appreciates their input, and I will always be the first one to go to them and say, we got to talk about this, we got to discuss what this looks like for the rest of the valley. I want to, you to participate. We don't always agree, we agree to disagree sometimes, but I know that they value our input, and I value very much their opinion on every policy issue that we take up. So with that, I want to congratulate them on their 70th anniversary here in the San Fernando Valley, and I think it'd be, I'd be remiss now to also acknowledge the fact that a lot of our council members who represent the valley are also here to celebrate their 70th anniversary. I would like for all of them to say a few words to celebrate this incredible milestone here in the valley. I want to call up Mr. Kukorian.
Thank you very much, Ms. Martinez. Thank you for bringing VICA here to celebrate with us here in Van Nuys. You know, business organizations are not just advocacy organizations for business. Business organizations are made up of people who have an entrepreneurial spirit, who invest in the future, who know how to promote and market. And as a result, the Los Angeles that we know has very much been built by people, the Greater LA Chamber of Commerce and other business organizations that have promoted Los Angeles, brought people here, brought investors here, brought businesses here to create jobs and create opportunity, that allowed this city to become what it is. And so, it is true of VICA and the modern San Fernando Valley as well. When VICA began, the San Fernando Valley had a little over 100,000 electricity users in the San Fernando Valley. We now have 2 million residents. This was a place where Pierce College was an agricultural college that had not yet admitted its first woman, and had not yet begun giving business classes that didn't involve agriculture. In 1952, just shortly after VICA began, the San Fernando Valley Board of Real Estate was discussing the possibility of building a monorail, Kobe, from San Fernando Valley to Long Beach, and the red cars were being shut down throughout the San Fernando Valley. The site had not yet been chosen for San Fernando Valley State College, which would become Ms. Martinez's alma mater, CSUN, and the folks who are here from Reseda High School, Reseda High School, the first, the first high school to open first high school to open in 20 years in Los Angeles, had not even yet opened. So it was a dramatically different San Fernando Valley. But the people who started VICA also had a vision for the future of the San Fernando Valley, not just as a place of single-family homes where people commuted from here to where the jobs were, but a place where we could create jobs, create opportunities, build great businesses, and that has been done. And some of the struggles that we faced 70 years ago, yes, we still continue to struggle with. We still don't have enough transit in the San Fernando Valley, as we didn't then. But VICA has been at the very cutting edge of fighting for that. And as the valley representative on the Metro Board, I can tell you that Measure M and all of the investment that will benefit this county for the rest of our lifetimes would not have happened, it would not have passed, if it hadn't been for VICA's advocacy. And the San Fernando Valley would not have gotten what we're getting out of Measure M had it not been for VICA's advocacy. So this struggle for, not only fighting for policy issues that benefit businesses, but fighting for the advancement of the San Fernando Valley has been core to VICA's mission since its beginning. It continues to be now, and I'm so pleased to be able to join with my colleagues in not only celebrating this anniversary, but celebrating all that VICA has produced for the San Fernando Valley and will continue to in the decades to come. Congratulations. Happy anniversary.
Thank you, Mr. Kukorian. Next, I'd like to invite Mr. Blumenfield. I know he was, is he here?
Thank you, Ms. Martinez, and thank you for putting this together to honor VICA. We are, you know, this premier business organization for the San Fernando Valley, does such great work, and it was wonderful to bring them here today. As was mentioned, they have been integral in so many key decisions that have been made in pushing the city, pushing the state to the next level. And what I like about VICA is, you know, unlike some business organizations that always say no, VICA is actually much more thoughtful, and they say yes sometimes. Sometimes, not all the time.
Sometimes are those, Bob.
Well, I'll give you an example. Well, I'll give, Kobe says, we have a lot of great VICA past chairs and future chair behind me that all do great work. But I remember in 2012, I was, I was the chair of the Budget Committee for the State, for the Assembly, and we were in a crazy financial crisis, and we wanted to push Proposition 30, which would extend a tax to fund higher education, to fund education. And we were trying to get support from around the state and get business groups behind it. VICA stepped up. VICA supported Proposition 30. And that made a difference. That didn't pass by a large margin, so that was really important. You mentioned Measure M, that was key. I also think just even more recently, when dealing with the orange line and with Measure M, trying to get, make sure that that orange line would get the resources it needs and ultimately become a train and have grade separation, well, VICA helped organize that. And I really believe if you hadn't been there, we wouldn't have the funding in it for the orange line right now to be what it is in terms of where it's going, the grade separation and the train. So I'm deeply appreciative. In fact, I liked VICA so much that I stole the past chair, Kevin Tomaki, who's over there, and he's now on my team. He's been on my staff for, how long?
Almost two years.
Almost two years now. And, you know, he knows everybody at VICA, and we're able to work so closely together on business and economic development issues, and he does an amazing job. And just, I look around at all of the, all of the chairs, and of course, Stuart, who has been at the helm for over 10 years now. It really, it gives me great pleasure to wish all of you a happy anniversary and many good years in the future, both saying no occasionally, but also saying yes. So thank you, VICA, and happy anniversary.
Next up is Mr. Rue, followed by Mr. Kurets.
Thank you, Councilwoman Martinez. And, you know, actually, I was hoping to go last, because I wanted to throw the gauntlet down and say, you know, I am so honored to also represent the valley, but not just any part of the valley, but the beating heart of the valley in Sherman Oaks, where it's the most vibrant part of the valley. But in all seriousness, but in all seriousness, I really want to thank Ms. Martinez for bringing VICA and to celebrate their anniversary, because VICA is an organization that we look to when we work on various policy issues. And in their own right, it's not just about the L.A. Chamber, but VICA stands on its own, because we want to know what VICA thinks about. And while we might disagree at times, it's very important to have disagreements, very important to have discussions, because that's what makes our decisions more robust and more comprehensive. But as you could see here, we now have seven members representing the valley. And it is very important, it's a little less than the majority, but it is very important that the valley gets its fair share. I am so honored to join my valley colleagues to make sure, to join this fight along with VICA, to make sure that the valley does get its fair share. So thank you so very much, Ms. Martinez, for bringing this presentation, a happy anniversary to VICA and all that you have done and will do. And a special shout-out to Stuart. Thank you for being a good friend, and thank you for leading this great organization. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kukorian. Mr. Kurets, followed by Ms. Rodriguez and Mr. Lee.
Well, y'all look great for 70. It's my pleasure to honor VICA along with my fellow colleagues that represent the San Fernando Valley. And it's been said by everyone, sometimes we agree, sometimes we disagree. It's probably more noticed when we disagree, but frankly, we've agreed a lot. And sometimes, from my personal perspective, I've been persuaded by the dialogue that I've had with VICA. And if there's anything that really stands out among business organizations, to me at least, I believe it's the fact that VICA is engaged in dialogue. And I've been pleased in recent opportunities to speak at a housing forum of theirs, at VICA After Dark, and exchange ideas. I've put in motions on business-related topics because of discussions I've had with VICA and its members. And I think it's actually a great service to the council and to the city and not just to the San Fernando Valley, but their business perspective on the entire city. I also want to thank your incoming president, Brad Rosenheim, for hiring me in 1984 and training me how to do constituent service in Marvin Browdy's Valley Office. And that has stood me well over the last 35 years. So thank you for a great 70 years, and we look forward to the next 70 years. I'll be there to celebrate the next one.
Thank you, Mr. Kurets. Ms. Rodriguez, followed by Mr. Lee.
Before you start, Ms. Rodriguez, if we could have quiet in the back, please. This time is not your time, it is the presentation's time. So this is a warning for those that are disrupting the meeting in the back, to please sit down and wait for your turn. Back to you, Ms. Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Ms. Martinez, for bringing in this very special presentation and celebrating the 70 years that VICA has contributed to our San Fernando Valley. You know, it was, gosh, I guess about 43 years ago that what brought my family to the San Fernando Valley was the manufacturing opportunities and union jobs that the General Motors plant provided. And when we saw the elimination of those jobs over the course of time, whether it was Price-Fister with Ms. Martinez's family, or General Motors Plant, which triggered my father to then apply to become an L.A. City firefighter, it had tremendous impact on the residents of the San Fernando Valley. But it's because of the advocacy and work of organizations like VICA and their partnership to help shepherd in other opportunities for employment, the jobs that will be coming as a result of the investments that are finally going to be made through Measure M in the northeast San Fernando Valley. We now have greater opportunities that we can provide our residents because of the collaboration and leadership and partnership that we've had and enjoyed with this incredible organization. So I want to congratulate you all on 70 years of advocacy and work. Our work is far from over, and our collaboration is far from over. And the truth of the matter is, is that, you know, the diversity of the organizations that partner and the businesses that partner and are members of VICA are critically important to assuring that we don't miss an opportunity to service everybody's needs here in the San Fernando Valley. So congratulations on 70 years. We look forward to our continued partnership together.
And to wrap this up, Mr. Lee. Not really, but he's the last member to speak.
Well, you know, my family came here 49 years ago, 1970, because of the opportunity here in the valley. And I've been able to witness that over the 49 years of living here, the growth of the San Fernando Valley and all that's been done. But it wasn't until I started with Councilman Wax in the mid-'90s, where I saw the importance of VICA and all that they contributed to the growth of the San Fernando Valley. And I'm very fortunate that the, as a staffer and chief of staff, and now as a council member, I've had the pleasure of working with so many of them and on so many important projects that I now, when I take a look behind me, I consider most of these people to be friends of mine. They've been, had such great leadership under the different chairs and executive directors. Kobe, Kobe King and I, I mean, it wasn't, right before I decided to run, we had a long talk about businesses and different ideas that we had here in the city. And he was someone that I knew that I could count on to have that conversation with. Lisa Gritzner, Lisa Gritzner is someone who I attribute to helping me, to teach me how to become a chief of staff. When I took that role under Mitch, I went to Lisa to seek her guidance, and she's done an amazing job as chair. Brad, our incoming chair, has been just a friend throughout the years, someone who has been so committed to our communities and someone that we know that we can always turn to in order to support those worthwhile organizations. And I appreciate those relationships. And then Stuart. So, and then, so, no, Stuart and I, we have a wonderful relationship so much that I know that, and I hope that he feels that he has that sort of, you know, accessibility to me, so that when business issues come before the city, that he knows that he can give me a call and we can discuss things that, you know, different issues that he thinks are important, not only to the valley, but to the business community as a whole. And I so appreciate this relationship, and want to thank them and congratulate them on their 70th birthday.
Ms. Martinez, we have Mr. O'Farrell on the queue. Mitch, if you'd like to maybe...
I just have one more. Mr. Lee was not actually going to wrap up. We have one more speaker.
Okay.
And I'm happy to turn it over to members on the queue. That was funny, that was funny, John, about Stuart. But I get to represent Stuart. He's my constituent, and he's very vocal and very active. But there was a consensus to have our incoming, our incoming chair of VICA say a few words on behalf of the organization. So I'd like to welcome our, the incoming chair of VICA, Brad Rosenheim, to say a few words.
Welcome, Brad.
Good morning. Thank you very much, Mr. President, future President Nury Martinez. Thank you very much for inviting us here today, to all the council members and to our valley council members. The post-World War II residential construction boom brought thousands of dynamic young families to the valley. And as a result, VICA was founded actually as the Industrial Association of the San Fernando Valley. And it was a group of business leaders, but also city leaders. Department of Water and Power was very involved in the formation of VICA. And the Articles of Incorporation that the leaders drafted were as pertinent today as they were then, and that is to foster industrial and commercial development of the San Fernando Valley. VICA's founders recognized that a business-friendly climate and a robust economy was critical to our long-term success and the quality of life for our newly-minted valley residents. Our name may have changed, but our mission remains the same, to enhance the economic vitality of the region by advocating for a better business climate and quality of life. We've done some incredible work over the years. We've earned a reputation as an organization that fights for the valley to access resources such as transportation, housing, jobs, and business opportunities. VICA was instrumental, as was mentioned, in having the 118 freeway built, having the 101 freeway built, and having Cal State Northridge become part of our Cal State system. And Go Matadors, right? Most recently, we worked together advocating for Measure M and have had great success in bringing transportation and transit dollars to the San Fernando Valley. As the incoming chair of VICA, I'm looking forward to continuing VICA's work with you to make the valley the location of choice for Southern California businesses and families. Our members are currently voting on our legislative priorities as we move forward into the next decade. There's no shortage of issues that we face. I'm certain that housing, economic development, and enhanced transportation will continue to be at the top of our list. VICA's strength has always been from our members, who believe in the value of fighting for a more prosperous future for the people in the San Fernando Valley. And decades ago, we moved from a volunteer organization to a professionally-staffed organization. I know you're always happy to see our representatives before council. And as Stuart likes to say, and I'm sure you've all heard it, "We may not always agree, but you always know we're right." That's Stuart, not me. It's our pledge to you that the VICA team will continue to drive the business agenda for the San Fernando Valley and to continue to work with our government partners for another 70 years. I want to thank you all very much, and incoming President Martinez, for bringing us here today, and also wish you all a very happy holiday season and a great 2020.
Thank you. That's probably why VICA chose Brad to speak and not Stuart. In all seriousness, on behalf, on behalf of my colleagues, the entire San Fernando Valley and the City of Los Angeles, we'd like to congratulate VICA on an amazing 70 years and well wishes to many, many more. Congratulations.
All right. Why don't we, we'll take a couple of photos, and then, Mr. O'Farrell, the floor is yours.
Where am I looking? Where are we looking?
Right here.
Betsy first.
Betsy first.
Okay, let's recognize Mr. O'Farrell. Go on, Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, colleagues, for bringing VICA forward for their 70th anniversary. I think of VICA as a real touchstone and a leading voice in the city from the business community. Anytime we make a policy on economic, you know, issues, development, business decisions, I always think of what does, I'm always cognizant of what does VICA think about this. So I like to sometimes see the policy ideas through the lens of what VICA has to say. And to Stuart, thank you so much for the signed, framed photo of yourself. I don't know how many other members have one, but I have one.
We have, I have mine.
We all have one.
Everybody's got one.
Thank you so much.
So Mitch, Mitch, talk about that funny, like, the gift that he gifted all of us.
I've never received that from any other business member anywhere across the City of Los Angeles. So it was a luncheon, and there was a surprise-wrapped, unsigned gift to all of the members. And we open it, and it's a signed photograph of Stuart Waldman with a personal message. So thank you for that. And to Bob, I don't know, to Bob, hearing "yes" sometimes is better than hearing "no" all of the time.
That's right.
So thank you, VICA, for your partnership.
Very well said, Mr. O'Farrell.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Big round of applause.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Blumenfield, we've got some very important people here, I'm told, some very, very important team.
Bring up all the region champions up here. Come on, guys. Don't be shy. Come on up, gather round. Deputy Chief Pitcher, you come on up. Frank Bush, you come on up, too. All right. Coach Ariella, there you are, all right. All right. Well, it is my honor and pleasure to recognize... Well, it is my honor and pleasure to recognize the city Section Division I football champions. You know them, you love them, you know who I'm talking about, the Reseda Charter High School Regents. Last Saturday, as you probably all know, in the title game, the Regents battled another great team from this city. And yes, another great team from my district, the conquistadors of Woodland Hills and El Camino Real. And they won. These guys won by a score of 44-26. Reseda High School captured the Division I title. Couple of highlights. Quarterback Trent Butler, he's here, Trent? He completed eight of 21 passes for 246 yards. Kayden Jones rushed 15 times for 65 yards. Reseda has now captured its third city crown, having won the 2A Division in 1986, the 3A Division in 1995, under former coach Joel Schaefer. Schaeff, yes, we like, know him and love him. And now here they are today. The players on the Reseda varsity team set a goal in February during their offseason. And that's when the journey to this victory really began. At first, the goal may have seemed too lofty to some because much of the Regents roster was full of young people. 12 sophomores, six juniors, 12 seniors made up the roster. However, these young men worked hard, getting stronger, sharpening their craft during 6:00 AM workouts in the spring. They worked hard. They had a vision. They knew where they wanted to go. And the summer came around and the players began to gel and they developed an amazing chemistry. Soon enough, they were faced with their first big test of 2019. That was a matchup with Crenshaw. Crenshaw was an opponent with a rich tradition and history of success. That night, the Regents were defeated. They were defeated on the field. But what that game did was provide a belief. Provided a belief that these boys can play and they can compete with anyone, anywhere in the city. And that belief buoyed them. And that made them stronger and it made them want to work harder. And harder they did. As the season progressed, the kids grew mentally, emotionally, and physically. This progression allowed them to compete at a high level and allowed them to be resilient in the face of adversity. And these young men have accomplished something great that the entire community, alumni, and school is very proud of, not to mention the entire city council and the entire city of Los Angeles. One of the Regents' biggest fans is our own Building and Safety General Manager Frank Bush. Yeah, who's here? Who was at the championship game cheering on the Regents and he's here to do the same. Frank's going to say a few words in a second. We also have Deputy Chief Pitcher over there. You guys all know Deputy Chief Pitcher. He is not only here to support the Regents, he is an alum and he used to play on the team himself. So there is a big history here. It's not just about football, folks. This is about love of the community in Reseda. Now, tomorrow evening, the Regents will face Anaheim Esperanza High in Yorba Linda for the Southern California Division 5A championship. Now, we know you're going to win, but win or lose, you are our champions in this city and we're here to acknowledge that. And we love you. So please join me in congratulating the Reseda Charter High School Regents on the city championship, wishing them the best of luck for tomorrow. And we're going to have a couple of speakers. Now, I don't know, Trent, did you want to say a few words? He said no. Our quarterback, he's great under pressure. He can throw an amazing pass, but he does not want to speak in public. I understand that. But we do have the coach. You going to say a few words? All right, come on up.
I just want to thank the city council, specifically Councilman Bob Bloomingfield, Jenny Portillo, and Frank Bush. Definitely proud of the guys behind us. The accomplishment is not only great for our school but our community. Also want to just thank some of, you know, along this journey, there's been a lot of energy and sacrifices made by a lot of people, especially on our end, my family, my wife, Rosio, and my kids. I want to thank our administration, Ms. Welsh, Ms. Garcia, and Mr. Sherman Gardner back at the school. Want to definitely thank all our parents, our fans, that continue to support us throughout the year. And our, you know, our managers back here, some young ladies that sacrificed and put a lot of energy for these boys to continue their journey throughout the year. And lastly, definitely want to just thank the guys back here because they put in the work. Oh, actually, not lastly. Want to thank our coaching staff. Our coaching staff is made of great men, men of character, men that lead and lead the right way. And without it, we definitely wouldn't be up here. And so I love the coaches. There's two that are represented here today and the rest at home. And lastly, our players. These guys, as you heard earlier, they, back in February, they start 6:00 AM workouts. Those are not for the weak of mind or weak of body. And these guys were very consistent and consistent for the last seven, eight months and ultimately brought home a championship to the city of Reseda. And I am extremely proud of you guys. And thank you once again for everything that you guys have done, you guys have done. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Coach. And I like that you thanked the parents because as a parent of a student athlete myself, I know how much goes into that. So you guys deserve a tremendous round of applause. Now I want to bring up, no stranger to this city, General Manager of Building and Safety, but also Chief Booster of the team. So Frank, come on up.
Good morning. I mainly just want to give a shout out to Reseda. Congratulations. I'm not a Reseda alum. I actually went to Birmingham, a Birmingham alum. But, yeah, yeah, thank you. But my four kids went to Reseda High School, starting in '87 through '04. So I've been very involved in the school. And I just want to give a shout out to the school on the overall. It's a very good program at Reseda. And I especially want to give a shout out to Coach Ariola this morning. A lot of times, we take for granted what coaches do with our kids at school. And he's done an outstanding job there. He was also a Regent. He played there. I remember watching him play football and baseball. And he went to college and came back as a teacher and a coach. And he's not just the football coach and his staff that's with him too. They really pour a lot into the lives of these young men that are here today. And I just wanted to, you know, come up and give them a shout out for that. So, thank you.
Coach, would you accept this certificate on behalf of the entire team? This is a certificate of appreciation and recognition from the City of Los Angeles for our champions. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, if we could move on to item number five?
Very good. Item five called Special For Cards.
And the speakers are Robin Samuels, to be followed by Joe Goldman and Sean Murphy.
Thank you. I'm here with other representatives of Leo Beck Temple. We are proud to be a sanctuary synagogue, a highest welcome campaign congregation, and a member of LA Voice, a multi-faith, multiracial community coalition. Leo Beck's Temple's sacred commitment to stand with immigrants has led us not only to advocacy like today but also to direct action. Our congregants currently offer spiritual and financial partnership to two families, one of which is defending their right to stay in this country, which has been their home for 20 years, and the other family bravely journeyed here from El Salvador to find asylum from life-threatening persecution. We are grateful for the many ways this council has acted to show that LA values the contributions and dignity of all our immigrant residents. And we, at Leo Beck Temple and LA Voice, urge you to pass this resolution to demonstrate that we are also a champion of one of our nation's essential founding principles, to welcome refugees. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe Goldman? Is Mr. Goldman still here? Okay. Sean Murphy, to be followed by Beverly Weiss and Omar Azizi. Mr. Murphy appears not to be here any longer. Beverly?
I'm against disavowing. Give people a chance to get up to the podium, for God's sake.
Beverly Weiss?
Thank you. My name is Beverly Weiss and I'm a concerned citizen. I want to kind of give a global perspective to this refugee crisis. Since 2016, I've been volunteering independently in Greece, in Heos Island, and Samos, and Athens. And then I follow these refugees from Syria, Afghanistan, Iraq, to where they, some of them get resettled, of which, by the way, only 1% of all the 26 million refugees get resettled. So it's a small group. And I have to say, when I go visit Norway, Germany, and Iceland, where some of my refugee friends have landed, I see them working so hard to learn the language. They take a whole year just to learn the language. They're so motivated. They talk about how safe they feel for the first time in their lives. And I think to myself, what a waste of resources that we can't bring them here. And when they say, "Where's the best place to resettle?", I can't say the U.S. right now. I said, "Not in this administration. Go to Canada." I mean, it hurts me as a grandchild.
Thank you. Next speaker is Omar Azizi, to be followed by Matthew Friedman and Shahrad Ensenius. I'm sure I pronounced that wrong. I apologize.
Hello, everyone. My name is Omar Azizi and I'm a refugee from Afghanistan. My mother was a cosmetologist, a hairdresser, and a teacher in Kabul when she was persecuted by the warlords and the religious fundamentalists for which we had to escape home overnight. I grew up as a refugee in Afghanistan and we made it to the U.S. five years ago. In 10 days, I'll graduate USC with a degree in business, with awards ranging from a full-ride scholarship and an award by Obama. During my time at USC, I founded an app that empowers refugees globally, finding resources around them and optimizes NGOs' operation processes. I owe it all to my community, especially the Los Angeles community, who supported, welcomed, and embraced me. If it was not for this community welcoming and opening doors to me and my family, I wouldn't be alive today, just like some of my friends never made it. I request the council to pass this resolution and make Los Angeles a welcoming place for refugees. Thank you.
Thank you. Matthew Friedman?
Good morning, council members. My name is Matthew Friedman. I'm Senior Associate Regional Director with ADL Los Angeles. And on behalf of ADL, I am writing, I am here in support of the resolution that will, by council members Bloomingfield and O'Farrell, which is declaring Los Angeles a welcoming city and affirms the support of resettling refugees, no matter their race, religion, gender, gender identity, sexual orientation, nationality, or country of origin, and resolves that the city will improve refugee integration and calls on the president to increase the refugee resettlement cap for 2020. ADL was founded in 1913 to stop the defamation of the Jewish people and to secure justice and fair treatment for all. We represent a immigrant community, a refugee community, and we stand with our allies in the immigrant communities to support this resolution and reaffirm our support of its aims. We believe that immigrants and refugees have strengthened this nation, the State of California, and the City of Los Angeles. So, thank you.
Thank you. Shahrad Ensenius?
Hello, it's Shahrad. Very close.
Close, but no cigar.
I am speaking on behalf of the Central American Studies Department at Cal State Northridge. And with more than 6,000 students in the, well, more than 6,000 Central American students at Cal State Northridge, we urge you to please pass this resolution. This administration is not playing fair at all and it will heavily affect our communities and our, well, and Northridge and all the Cal States. So, thank you.
Thank you. Roberta Saravia, to be followed by Mary Garvey, David Chu, and Eric Previn.
Hello, I represent the Central American Resource Center, CARESIN, also a partner organization with SALIF. Like SALIF, we do a lot of work with the immigrant community, a lot of border work, a lot of work here in Los Angeles, in the Westlake-McArthur Park area. And I have a very deep commitment to my community. My parents were refugees. My mom was an economic refugee. My father fled the Civil War in El Salvador. And along with my grandmother, uncles, aunts, a lot of family that were tortured, maimed, friends that they lost. And this just continues. It's just, what's that thing? I guess the song remains the same, you know? And I know that having this resolution pass is basically you all taking responsibility and knowing where we come from and telling the Trump administration that we don't agree with that. So, thank you. Please, thank you for your time.
Thank you. David Chu? To be followed by Eric Previn.
Thank you all. My name is David Chu and I'm representing Temple Isaiah, a highest welcome campaign congregation. Today, words of Torah haunt me. Deuteronomy 23, "The nations of Ammon and Moab are condemned because they did not meet the Israelites with food and water as they fled Egypt. God commands us to welcome those fleeing oppression. Have we? I fear not. The worst refugee crisis in history, over 70 million, and we slammed the gates in their faces. Our average refugee cap was 95,000, 200,000 under President Reagan. Now the current administration wants to slash that to a paltry 18,000, the lowest ever since the Refugee Act was passed. I fear this is more than bad policy. I fear it is unholy. At this moment, God is watching our nation," and that makes me tremble. But this city can show God a different face. We can demand the refugee cap be returned to its bipartisan average, 95,000. We can say it loud, say it clear, refugees are welcome here."
Thank you. Mr. Previn?
Thank you. It's Eric Previn from Council District 2. And I would lend my support to the idea of welcoming refugees from around the world who have been put in, you know, untenable, hostile, horrifying situations. So I applaud the council for having such a large press outcropping today and bringing in so many different groups, including the ADL and Leo Beck Temple. I can only say that those of us in Los Angeles who know the work of Leo Beck Temple and the ADL, who are monitoring the rights groups, the groups that oversee all sorts of activities with refugees and others, how proud we are. And also, I would just simply ask that Leo Beck finally and once and for all drop the lawsuit against the county for the Skirball fire, for which we had nothing to do with it. It was a fire, they did not sustain millions of dollars of damage. And it's not fair. We should put that money on the screen.
Mr. Previn, would you please get on the agenda item?
Pull my microphone down, sir? Good lord. Don't do that. The ADL is here.
You're off topic.
Thank you. Good day.
Next speaker will be Anahita Panahi, followed by Ann Durbin, Fred Summers, and Candace Graham.
Good morning. My name is Anahita Panahi. On behalf of the National Advocacy Campaign, We Are All America, and a concerned citizen, the daughter of refugees from Iran, I urge you to pass this resolution that Los Angeles is a welcoming city and that we urge like California is a welcoming state for all refugees that are fleeing persecution, war, natural disasters. War-torn countries are the epitome of what has caused refugees to flee their home countries. And I will tell you from firsthand experience of what my parents have faced that they are not leaving their countries because they want to, but because they have to. And so our duty is to welcome them with open doors and with open arms to accept them and let them resettle here because they enrich our nation, they enrich our cities and our... them resettle here, because they enrich our nation, they enrich our cities and our state. So, I want to thank Councilmember Blumenfeld and O'Farrell for introducing this, and thank you so much. Please, please pass this, because welcomes are neighbors, brothers, sisters, doctors, workers. Thank you.
Thank you. Ann Durbin?
Hi. I'm Mary Garvey, and I think you skipped me. I heard my name earlier.
Ann Garvey?
Mary.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, great. Hi, I'm Mary Garvey. I'm here representing Human Rights Watch. I'm also a concerned citizen. One thing that I really want to let you all know and appreciate is by affirming the welcoming stature for Los Angeles for refugees, you're actually on a good path to combating Executive Order 13888, because what that executive order will do is if communities and municipalities do not affirm their welcome status for refugees, that's a de facto no. So, I appreciate it. Human Rights Watch appreciates it, and hopefully we can all move forward with the affirmation that refugees are still welcome in the United States.
Thank you. Ann Durbin?
Hello, my name is Ann Durbin, and I'm the Director of Advocacy at Jewish World Watch, which is an Encino-based genocide and mass atrocity prevention organization. As many of you probably know, the current level of displacement in the world is at the highest it's ever been, which is 70.8 million people. This leads to entire lost generations caught in limbo in massive sprawling refugee camps that inevitably become breeding grounds for extremism and perpetuate problems of global fragility. So, I'm here in a professional capacity to urge you to please recognize the need for us to open doors to these people, not only as a means of preventing future atrocities, but also for tapping into the incredible potential that these refugee populations sort of represent. And I'm also a daughter of...
Thank you. Fred Summers, to be followed by M. Candace Graham, Jasmine Tobar, and Mary Sol Velamor.
Hello, my name, back up. Hello, my name is Fred Summers, and I'm here today on behalf of Jewish Family Service of Los Angeles and the people we serve. I urge your support for the resolution presented by Councilmembers Blumenfeld, O'Farrell, declaring Los Angeles a welcoming city for refugees. JFS LA has 165 years of proven experience meeting the evolving needs of our diverse and changing community. JFS has resettled over 27,000 refugees, primarily from the former Soviet Union and Iran. As one of the most diverse cities in the world, Los Angeles has embraced its multicultural, multilingual, multi-ethnic heritage, providing a welcoming home for immigrants arriving from near and far. Over the past 40 years, refugees have enriched our city and our region, both economically and culturally. The council members' resolution? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Fred Summers just spoke, right? Candace Graham?
Yes, hello. Hi, good afternoon, everybody. I'm very proud of Joe Busciano. I'm very proud of Noori. I'm very much proud of Herb Wesson. And I'm thankful for all of you guys to be here, to be able to present an affirmative presentation for all property owners here in Southern California. Agala, AOA, BOA, MOA, FHC, us, Novab, Pentagotus, all of us agree. But first, we agree what you found out in the last two years is that housing is so much important. Housing is a legs. So, when we're talking about settlement and creating this settlement, we want to be at the ground point to be able to work with you, to create a positive reenactment for all visitors to this city. It is a welcoming city, but it should also be welcoming and a sanctuary for property owners, too.
Thank you. Jasmine Tobar, to be followed by Mary Sol Velamor.
Good morning, council members and community members. My name is Jasmine Tobar, and I work for Salif, and I also am a lecturer in the Central American Studies Department at CSUN. I am a daughter of Salvadoran refugees, and I have a family that was displaced worldwide due to our U.S.-backed Civil War. Through Salif, I serve as Program Director at Casa Libre, a shelter for unaccompanied minor boys. We currently have seven residents who have entered the country without any parents. Many of these youth are fleeing violence and have lost their parents due to the constant terror happening in our homelands, which is inflicted by U.S.-failed policies. Our youth walked for months through some of the most dangerous routes to reach our country, to reach our country to seek safe heaven. Los Angeles is a place they now call home. Our youth have a long road ahead of them. Many of them do not have family in the U.S. Next week is the one-year anniversary of the killings of three boys that Salif was supporting in Tijuana. These boys were waiting to seek asylum in the U.S. and never were able to enter the U.S. and unfortunately lost while waiting. I want to thank everyone for the efforts, and please help me make L.A. a place where refugee communities dream of. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Sol Velamor, to be followed by Wayne Williams, Tadi Espalay, and Rabia Ahmadi.
I come here today as a resident of Councilmember Corret's 5th District, who vehemently supports refugee resettlement. We all know refugee resettlement reflects Americans' values and that it's our moral obligation as a nation to accept refugees. Today, we've heard personal stories from refugees and many public comments laying out numerous moral, political reasons to accept refugees. And I'm sure you know that studies have repeatedly shown that refugees, by far, end up being incredibly productive members of our communities. However, if that was not enough to appeal to you, please remember the invaluable economic and social impact refugees have always had on our society. To highlight this, please note that the following Americans were once refugees, seeking to come to our country: former Secretary of State Madeleine Albright, American author and Pulitzer Award winner Viet Phan Nguyen, who's a Vietnamese-American novelist, and the Errol Arnold Chair of English and Prof. Mila Kunis, and Gloria Stephan. Thank you.
Thank you. Wayne Williams? Appears not to be here. Tadi Espalay? To be followed by Rabia Ahmadi.
Good morning, community members. Good morning, council members and President Wesson. Thank you so much for your leadership and support for refugees. And today, I'm here representing the Black migrants and refugees. I work with refugees, you know, from Africa and the Caribbean countries, and also South and Central American countries. And I just want to remind you to include the voice of, you know, Black refugees and migrants, you know, when you do your work. And also, I urge you to pass this resolution, and make sure that, you know, to make sure that, you know, our city is a vibrant and welcoming city for refugees and migrants, and thank you so much.
Thank you. Tadi Espalay, or is that the person that just spoke? I believe that was. Rabia Ahmadi, to be followed by Roberto Saravia.
Hello, good morning, council members. This is Rabia Ahmadi, representing Miris List. Miris List is a nonprofit organization which helps refugees from Iran, Afghanistan, Syria, Jordan. We serve over 300 families right now, and we are in contact with them. So, they don't want to leave their countries, but they have to, because in this situation that their countries, they face this situation, they have to leave their countries. So, as a representative of Miris List, I request the council members to pass this resolution to make Los Angeles a more welcoming city for the refugees and newcomers. Thank you so much for supporting the refugees.
Thank you. Roberto Saravia? Already went. Candido, to be followed by Donna, Dan, and Miriam.
Am I next, sir?
Yes, you are.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. The American dream, the American dream should be allowed and given to anyone who comes here, immigrants, people from this nation. Ms. Rodriguez, you're absolutely right. We are all immigrants, and even as a First American with 59% Navajo Indian, 9% Jew, Jewish, and Spaniard, I think it should be available to everyone. But we have a responsibility. We have a responsibility to make sure that dream is made and is ready for the next generation or the next group of people. California and Los Angeles especially is a place that anybody can come to and can achieve the American dream. And so, all I ask you is to continue to allow that to happen. But let's all be responsible and make sure that the dream is ready for the next group of people to come to this country.
Thank you. Donna, to be followed by Dan, Miriam, and Mike Greenspan.
Biggest problem we have, though, is we don't have the ability to take care of these 95,000 people, have opportunities for these 95,000 people. So, you're just speaking men, and a good portion of them, the ones who are not speaking, are not having opportunities. Of course, their side is not brought up, just the ones that have succeeded. And we have the problem, we also have veterans. We have to take care of our veterans that went through the wars. We have to take care of our disabled people. We have to take care of the homeless already have. And we can't do that and spread all the resources for all the people who are coming as refugees and all the people who are already here. I get 40 pieces of mail and Social Security of people we can't find, they can't get on their disability, and we're worrying up, and we're bringing all the stuff with the refugees. And at one point, we have to think about Americans, because we don't have anything for these refugees.
Dan, to be followed by Miriam, Mike Greenspan, and Armando Herman.
Council members, this is such a great idea, but as always, you spoke without thinking, and the incendiary language from Mr. O'Farrell is only going to harm this effort. There is an all-time high jobs report released today. The stock market's over 28,000. Trump, at worst, will be impeached and not removed from office, and most likely, he will be reelected. So, the last thing you should do is come here and start hurling invective, which is what Mr. O'Farrell did. You took a great idea, and you let your invective get the better of you.
We should counter instead.
He's interrupting me. I'd like a little bit of time. His invective is disrupting my comments. You should have taken the tone from the ADL. And what is a refugee? There are hundreds of thousands of refugees from Central America, economic refugees also, and not one word about the cost, the housing, and who's going to pay for it. So, please give me my five seconds that Mr. O'Farrell interrupted me for. He interrupted me.
Thank you, Mr. Gus. Miriam, to be followed by Mike Greenspan and Antonio Herman.
Strepan, he interrupted me.
You're, all right, fine. We'll give you your five seconds.
And you see, that's what happens when you let your emotions get in the way of a good idea. I support it, but invective...
Thank you. Your five seconds are up. Miriam, to be followed by Mike Greenspan and Mr. Herman.
It says in the Jewish that to be kind to the cruel, then they turn around and they'll be cruel back to the kind people, the people who help them. I don't want that to happen to us. We got to be careful, and we need to know who the refugees we're bringing in. I'm kind of a neutral about it, but I do not want just bring in 95,000 because you want to get reelected, and then ride on their coats and have them vote for you, and then they live in sub-living conditions when they come here. I want them to have opportunity. I want them to come in legally. I want them to become part of our society. So, why are you people doing this? Because you people want to control us. You want to take away our rights. You want to make communism here. That's what you're doing. You're using these people.
Mike Greenspan, to be followed by Mr. Herman and Karen Hernandez. That's our last speaker.
Mike Greenspan, huh? Yeah, matadors, play the Gators in football. Oops! Now, one thing, regionality. I'm looking at subsection A. Yeah, you guys hate the South. You always have. You always will. What's new? The sun rises in the east and sets in the west.
Are you on this topic of item five?
Yes, as I say, regionality is an issue. Now, you know, hate us if you want. Now, your Measure C is what I call a wish list.
This is on item five, oddly.
It is item five. Measure C is about the Trump administration's doings. And hey, dummycrats, win the election. You run the department, and you run it with your immigration quotas the way you want. Otherwise, when the other side wins, you have to respect their wishes. They might not be your views. They might not be politically correct. It might not be what that faggot Favel likes, but fuck you!
Mr. Herman, to be followed by Karen Hernandez. And just for the record, before you start, Mr. Herman, for those in the audience that have not attended these meetings before, due to cases that we have been involved with and lost relating to the First Amendment, we have to hear comments such as that, no matter how vile, as part of our public testimony. It doesn't mean that we agree with it in any shape or form.
God hates homosexuality, but we, as American citizens, hate refugees and immigrants who illegally come into this country and absorb our Social Security benefits and force people with disability, elderly, into the fucking street. That's the most oppressive, disgusting, illegal, fucking racist, prejudiced motherfuckers some of you are. Are. Refugees have no right here. Get in line and get a visa. You're an immigrant, you're in this country. Get in line and get a visa. There are thousands of people here who are immigrants who've done the right thing in the name of the United States of America. 42 USC, 1983. Fuck you!
Karen Hernandez? To be followed by Wayne Spindler.
Good morning, or good afternoon. Hi, my name is Karen Hernandez. I'm here on my individual capacity to share my personal opinion about this matter, and I do applaud you for considering this and making it a welcoming city. It is important to build bridges and build unity. Of course, as you've heard already, our country is founded on immigrants, and there are so many innovations that come along with the many people that come from different countries with different talents and skills and abilities. I'm sure a lot of your families as well have that immigrant experience. So, welcoming refugees and finding innovative solutions to include them in our city and in our society, and, you know, help have these discussions with the public so that they're informed as to why it's important, is crucial. So, thank you for doing this today, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Spindler, you're our last speaker.
So, again, who leaves the room? Who hates immigrants? Herb Wesson. He does not stay here, because he doesn't support this motion. He doesn't support you. He doesn't support anybody but his greedy little fucking self. So, what about the refugee camps on Burbank Boulevard from Woodley Avenue to Havenhurst Avenue? There is a massive refugee camp. No, who doesn't pay attention, it's in your district, and you are not removing that encampment and getting those refugees housing, food, and assistance. And you go to Skid Row, we have the largest refugee camp in the United And you go to Skid Row, we have the largest refugee camp in the United States downtown, and you are not helping those refugees. First, fucking help our own fucking refugees fucking in LA, and then we will welcome more, you dumb fucking shit!
Mr. Clerk, we should open the roll on item number five?
Very good, sir.
Let's please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
And I'm proud to say that unanimously, Los Angeles is now a welcoming city for refugees.
Mr. President, that leaves item six before you. Would you like to take the cards on that matter?
Yes, so we will take item six and multiples for public comment and item six. So we'll begin with Mr. Previn. And he'll have, he'll have one minute for the item and one minute for public comment.
Thank you, sir. It's Eric Previn from Studio City, and I would request that I not be interrupted, as these comments are protected by the First Amendment, and the Anti-Defamation League is in the House.
So you're off topic, Mr. Previn, please continue.
No, I'm not, I'm on point, and I'm going to talk about the Youth Policy Institute, item number 2A. It's a little amendment. Thank you, Mr. Kretz, for chuckling along.
Are you on item number six, Mr. Previn?
2A, multiple comments, you called me on that, I've signed up on it. Pause my time, sir, we're going to have to go back to the beginning.
No, 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 Mr. Previn, hold this time for a second. Mr. Previn, you're not on item two, you're on item number six. Mr. Previn, item two had a hearing held, we've already voted on it, it's not up, open for public com- So do you, Mr. Previn, do you want to talk on item number six or not? You can go straight to your general public comment and talk about whatever you feel like.
Now, will you agree that I'm correct?
Okay, so I think, Mr. President, we should just send Mr. Previn to general public comments.
Did you not amend?
You have your one minute of general public comments.
That's, that's a violation, and we'll deal with that later. But sure, item 2A, what you're doing is you're taking an $875,000 chunk of general fund money, and you're giving it to Hackla, you're taking it away from Jewish vocational services and other groups in order to accommodate the Youth Policy Institute, I'll call it a debacle, because Dixon Slingerland was spending a lot of money, $1.7 million, in horribly corrupt ways, like paying for contributions to other, paying for different characters in his family in a way that was not proper, through the nonprofit. And now, what we're doing is we're moving the money out the doors, the argument, to Hackla, because they've been doing a better job of EWDD work, which is, as Mr. Kerkorian knows, you know, getting people workforce development opportunities. So by denying me the time, sir, you have completely violated my rights, and I cannot-
And now you're off topic, Mr. Previn. Do you want to-
You said I was in general public comment.
I'm sorry, you're correct.
Well, now I've been completely derailed. Why don't you give me a minute in general public comment? Because I have a general public comment.
Let's give you your extra five seconds. Go ahead.
Sir, you're losing it. That's not proper, okay? My general public comment was going to be a general public comment about how Brad Sherman, Adrien Nazarian, this council member Martinez, incumbents are using the public stuff, yeah, my, thank you, Mr. Martinez.
Your five seconds are-
He's joking about five-
Far up, your time is up. Thank you, Mr. Previn.
Thank you, Mr. Previn.
Mr. Previn, you're now disrupting the meeting. Mike Greenspan? And you'll have a minute each on item six and general public comment.
Thank you. Mike Greenspan, 10 and 2 for the Gator, and I still don't see LA. Now, this, there's something about this item. After all, what's 3,460,000-plus dollars? It's our money, and of course, our Speaker thinks it grows on trees, the County Board thinks it grows on trees, but it doesn't. But there's something good about this item. And the Department of Cultural Affairs reports that there is no impact to the general fund. We're actually dealing with monies that are here already, not more money to be just zapping our city treasury. Let's save money from, you know, the general fund to pay out sexual harassment claims from Englander and things like that, but at least this one did not come out of the general fund, and I'm grateful for that. Now, public comment, baby killers. Okay, we just had another dropout, another one bites the dust in our dummycrat sweepstakes. That's our lazy Kamala Harris. I wish she would have stayed around and, at least through Florida. She didn't support Andrew Gillum, the Democratic candidate for governor in Florida. She is against the death penalty, where even the dummycrats sign the death penalty execution warrants. And after all, I would have been fun to wait for her to drop out after Florida like Rudy did, but no, she dropped out before. Tough shit. Maybe she'll actually get to work and earn her paycheck. Don't blame me, I voted for Sanchez. I knew that she was no good for Senate. But after all, you guys have to have your politically correct pieces of shit like her to run for office, so they can then run for more office, and your Bruins still suck.
Mr. Herman, you'll have two minutes, one on item six, one on general public comment.
So an argument, ladies and gentlemen, regarding the Department of Cultural Affairs. Did you like my art? This is what we're looking to prove. Art development free. That's why I participated, because it's all free, free speech, free art, and public display of my content. However, I must instruct you that the DCA and the Controller, whoever the freak is, can't control my First Amendment of art. So the physical impact statement, under the color of the law, 18 USC, 242, 245, and guess what? Forty-two USC, 1983. Fuck you politely. Now, my public, general public comment. As of the date, received December 2nd, 2019, State Bar of California, first floor lobby, I indicated that a particular individual suppressed me, depriving my rights, claiming that I brought him fear. But he can't refrain himself from his so-called "stay away" order in my hand, which is a public document, number one. The TRO, 19STRO, 03037 for the record, in addition to that W-100 form in my hand as well. No less troubling is that I, the defendant, statement imploring to shoot the nigg, let's this country be fucked for another four years, because never in the history has a black person done anything right. "Shoot the nig" is in reference to the United States versus Brad Nazarian, 98/12, forty-two USC. Fuck you! There's my public document.
Candace Graham. And you'll have one minute on general public comment.
I'm sorry that you guys have to put up with so much. I'm only here on behalf of Apartment Owners Association, Agala, Fair Housing Coalition, and we have over 150,000 properties here in Los Angeles alone. I am the only intermediary for housing community investments, as far as a Department of Internal Affairs that actually looks at the wronggoings and the bias that you would have to deal with. We're the only known agency in the city of Los Angeles. So when I come up here, that's what I'm here for. The tenants, number one, which have their own website, and the housing providers. At the same point in time, I'm sorry for wasting your time, I'm here for section number two, item number, excuse me, I'm sorry, item number three and item number four. Did you guys have it already?
Your, your time is up, though. Thank you. Sean Murphy, still present? I don't believe so. Is he? There he is. Okay, so you'll have one minute on item six and one minute of general public comment.
I'm against item six, thank you.
Mr. Spindler.
So yes, now, let's get to number six, or what Nuri calls numero six. So yes, I have my artwork here. This is called "The Fucking Lemon," and I tried to display that and get my funding, and they denied it. Then I got my other motherfucker. I got my lemon, and then I got my city of LA lemon display sign, and I was trying to fucking talk about it and play rap music, and these motherfucking expenditures were denied. Why was my funding for my art denied, Mr. O'Farrell? That is odd. I have a right to express my ghetto aspect, and you motherfucking niggers ain't allowing me to express my ghetto aspect. Generalized public comment here, fool, is that yesterday, my Quizzie Harris Dawson dildo sold out Crenshaw Boulevard underneath the feet, underneath the faces of every African-American that's ever lived in the 8th District and the 9th District. Bloodsucker didn't even show up, and his real father, Mike Ridley Monkey, did not show up, hiding in shame. And then you had Mr. Bonin, who tried to stop the project. He couldn't stop the project. So they just selling out the Benjamins to Donald Trump. You guys working for Donald Trump. Donald Trump's working for the Chinese, and Nuri is working for Slim Fast. That's right. Because she's purposely getting fat to put more fucking weight on that big fat ass to get an advertising contract.
Remaining speakers on item six are Candido to be followed by Sheri Darashian, Wayne Williams, Miriam, and Donna. Any speakers still present?
Thank you, this is Sheri Darahoney, and I'm from Council District 12. I wanted to congratulate you, Nuri Martinez, for your accomplishment. Look forward to seeing woman at the helm. And as far as Public Art Initiative, I think, especially in the Valley, we have several museums, the San Fernando, the Museum of San Fernando Valley, we have Valley Relics Museum, there's a lot of murals, and the Public Art Initiative is very important, so I do think we should always support the arts. Without the arts, it's just a bunch of math, science, and reading, and the kids need arts and sports and all those things, so please vote for that. Thank you. And thank you for all your service, city council people.
Thank you. Wayne Williams, not present, I do not believe. Candido, believe also not present. Miriam. To follow, be followed by Donna.
So this is item six followed by general public comment.
Okay. We could have money raised. People will donate money, be glad to, because if they support having art done, they would have the, the monies given, not have to come out of taxpayers' money to fund this. So there is a way, and the way to cut this way down, I think it should be cut down quite a bit. Let's give this a chance for a very small amount, and let's work it up. That's how you do it. You get, help to get people to get involved, the community, and you get people to help donate. So I think it will be a success, and I don't like to see Miriam's all painted over, because they're all pretty. I know, I've seen them, and they're very pretty, and I don't understand why you spend so much money on any of them, and then you, you know, you just paint them over. They're all gone. What a waste of time, money.
Now you have your one minute of general public comment.
Well, anyway, you know, this is, this sanctuary state's going to come to an end. You people are not going to have all this, and we're not going to have communism, we're not going to have all this. We're going to have the US Constitution that we have been given by, by, by God, the God that we all worship, the same God, I hope, that we will be able to bring peace, harmony to all people here, but we're not going to have communism and socialism here. And I support our president, even if it's President Trump, unfortunately, I mean, that's just the way it is. He's our president. We have to have 62, 63 people, 63 million people voted for him. Let's just let it go through and stop this ridiculous impeachment, and let's just ride this through and make sure he does what he's supposed to do, okay? No amnesty.
Our next speaker is Donna.
Oh, yeah, thanks very much, Nuri.
And you have, excuse me, your time is up. Donna, you're our next speaker, item number six, to be followed by a minute of public comment.
At the fire station, stop telling this to behave. You need to behave. We're older than you. And so, number six over here, that's just, just way too much money here. The public art projects are relative of 747,522,86, and priority fees, 2,714,481,91. I love to be able to know exactly, and just throwing out numbers, exactly what that entails, what are projects, and that's just, you know, suddenly give out all this money, and we don't even know exactly what are projects, what, say, art schools or anything that's on this project, other than the fact that you'll rubber stamp it, and of course, then you'll rubber stamp that project and just spend that money, who cares what, that we need money for lots of other projects. So I'm going to be going on my public comment in a minute, and let's do the public comment now. Bring back video conferencing, we need video conferencing, so I'm, I'm not going downtown. Okay, now, we got a big problem over there. Yeah. Yeah, straighten up, Mary. Yeah. Yeah. Oh, okay. Okay, I got it. Let me tell them about the project. Okay.
Excuse me, you're repeating public comment.
I need to bring up real fast about the light rail and about the one on Sepulveda. They're going to bring up huge, but when they do that, bring up huge projects and huge metros, big, big apartment buildings and great big, like, stores, and that's going to screw up Sepulveda, is going to screw up Van Nuys Boulevard when they bring all these development, and it's just part of the development. What they do is they sell it to them real cheap, and they get it real cheap, and then they put large amounts of money on the people that they will have in their apartment buildings, so it's no good, no good, those things.
And now I think we can vote on item number six. We could open the roll, close the roll, and tally the vote.
Ten ayes.
That item passes.
Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral?
And we still have general public comment as well.
Oh, very good, sir.
So, general public comment, we have Dan Gus to be followed by Madeline Hamel, Marisol Vellamore- Vellamore, and M. Candace Graham.
Mike Prohm, please. Council members, and especially Mr. Kretz, I made an offer to L.A. Animal Services to adopt, not just take out and find a home for, but to adopt any dog who's in, like, the worst-case special needs situation, like one who's, like, bleeding or with broken legs. I offered to take them, and no response from your $314,000 GM. Imagine that. I would have saved you all of that money, all of that labor, to save the dogs in the worst condition, and no response from the commissioners, no response from Brenda Barnett, and no response from Mr. Kretz, who was on the emails too. Isn't that interesting? I'll save the worst-case scenario ones from County or Siaka. All you had to do was pay the basic veterinary fee. Here, let's show you what else they're not doing. For two weeks, you had a 15-year-old dog in the shelter, medical situation, no name, no photo. This dog has been in the shelter since August. No photo, no weight, no medical condition. What are you guys doing? Why are you guys paying them this money? I offered to help, not even a response for the worst-case scenario.
Madeline Hamel, to be followed by Marisol Vellamore. Don't see that they're here. And Candace Graham, I believe, already had actually testified under public comment and is not present. So, Mr. Clerk, what is before us?
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Those are posted and referred.
The desk is clear.
Announcements, colleagues? Mr. Blumenfield.
Great, thank you. I want to announce and invite everyone to come out to the West Valley this Sunday. We're having Sic La Via. First time that Sic La Via will be in the valley west of the 405. I'm really excited about it, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., five miles on Sherman Way between Shoup. It's going to go through Canoga Park, Winnetka, to Reseda, to Lindley Boulevard. The streets are going to be closed to cars. People are going to be walking, biking, rolling, anything they want on a non-motorized vehicle. We have three different stages. Mario Bertrand, singer from Fishbone, will be performing on the stage at Shoup and Sherman Way. On the Winnetka stage, we're going to have L.A. USD and all sorts of wonderful school performances. And then on the easternmost node in Reseda, the L.A. Kings are setting up a roller rink where ultimately our hockey rink's going to be. I urge everyone to come on out and have a great time, get healthy, exercise, and see the city, especially the West Valley, in a way that you can't do it from your car. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blumenfield. Sounds like a great time. I hope everybody comes out. Ms. Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. Kretz, and thank you, Mr. Blumenfield. In the Northeast Valley, we have a lot going on this weekend as well. Starting this evening, we'd like to invite everybody in the San Fernando Valley to come out to Brand Park in Mission Hills, where we are having a holiday night market that was organized in partnership with Molcajete Domingueiro. So we want to invite everyone to come on out and do some holiday shopping. We also want to remind everybody that you should bundle up because we hear that there are chances of snow. And then we also have tomorrow, it was highly successful last year, for those of us that grew up here in the San Fernando Valley, most, the only Christmas tree, the public Christmas tree that we would see lit up was typically when you were driving down the 405 and saw it on the Anheuser-Busch building. But we changed course in the 7th District, where we've got a 20-foot tree atop Pacoima City Hall, and that lighting will happen tomorrow evening, and we want to invite everybody tomorrow to Pacoima City Hall for Santa photos. And I will say that our Santa Claus is probably the best-looking Santa Claus you've ever seen. So come on out for some free Santa photos and our holiday tree lighting tomorrow night. Thank you.
Thank you, and we'll all be looking forward to the snow if it actually happens. Mr. Bonin?
Thank you, Mr. President. On the west side, in the 11th District, I'm trying to keep track of all of this, tonight in Pacific Palisades, downtown Palisades, there is the holiday stroll with a lot of cool features with local businesses. Tomorrow, all day long, in Brentwood, along San Vicente, is a holiday street festival. Tonight, at Loyola Marymount University, they are doing the community tree lighting, where the Associated Student Body puts on a big event for the Westchester community. All are welcome. Tomorrow night, the iconic Venice Sign will be lit for the eighth year in a row in red and green. Festivities start at 6:15. The sign lighting will be at 8:00. And tomorrow, all day long, in Delray, there are going to be a bunch of pop-up features along Centinela in Delray, along with the Heart of Delray Community Organization as part of the Mayor's Great Streets Challenge Grant. They're going to be demonstrating a number of pedestrian safety features that could be coming to the area. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonin. Mr. Price?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to remind neighbors to come out for the Winter Wonderland in South L.A. We'll be in South Park this year, not Central Avenue. There's going to be snow, there's going to be games, there's going to be toys, going to be hot chocolate, and I understand even Santa Claus is going to join us. So come on out from 11:00 to 4:00, South Park, 52nd and Avalon, for the Winter Wonderland in South L.A.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Seeing no further announcements, if we could all rise for adjourning motions? I'm looking to my left. I don't see any adjourning motions. Looking to my right, I am not seeing anyone unless I'm missing it, so we are adjourned.